Okay, thank you Scott. Is council ready?
Yep.
Is staff ready?
Uh huh.
All right, welcome everyone to this special city council work session for December 4th, 2023. Uh, Mary would you please call the roll?
Fritz.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
McLaughlin.
Here.
Cummins.
Here.
Minnetza.
Here.
This evening we have a presentation on the fiscal year 2022-23 audit by Redevalt Hefner and is there... Emily, do you want to start?
Sure. Emily Green, Finance Director for the City of Grand Haven. We have Mike Redevalt here to present.
Hi, I'm... Hi, I'm Mike Redevalt from Redevalt Hefner LLC. I'm the manager. I supervised all the fieldwork this year, so I'm quite familiar with the city. First off, thank you for having us out. Everything went really well this year, good cooperation from staff all around. And then, I'm gonna go over things in very high level of, or low level of detail, kind of a high level review. This was gone over in really deep detail with the Audit Review Committee last month. So the first thing I want to point out is, I don't have a slide on it, it's just in the audit report. On page one, there's a good, clean opinion. It's an unmodified opinion. It's exactly what you're looking for when you have an audit. So that's the second paragraph on that page. All right, first we'll go over the net position of governmental activities. The statement that this is kind of going over is on page... Thirteen. And this is kind of a more long-term outlook for the city as a whole. It combines it, or separates it into governmental activities, business-type activities. And you'll notice on slide one that the investment, or that the city is investing in a little bit more capital. You'll see that's kind of a vast majority of the city's net position. And slide two. Oh. There's a net position to business activities, so you can see there's an increase in unrestricted net position this year. And your investment in capital assets is remaining flat, so you're essentially replacing your assets as they depreciate, kind of on a similar schedule. So that's good. This is kind of exactly what you would expect to see in there. And I'll move on to the fund statements. This is on page sixteen of the audit. And you will notice the general fund is climbing after it had a slight dip a few years ago, so that's good. I did want to note that there's some budget stabilization money that's in committed fund balance in the general fund. It's $3.1 million, and that's about 20% of the upcoming fiscal '24 expenditures. Slide four goes with page eighteen of the audit, and this just kind of shows what you're spending your money on. So you'll see public safety continues to climb, so that's something to keep an eye on. And public works was way up this year. I believe that is due to some work with that harbor related work. Moving on to the enterprise fund, so this is gonna be the Board of Light and Power Sewer and Water Funds, along with some other smaller, non-major funds. And this just shows the sewer fund. You'll see revenue and expenses were both up, but there was an increase in net position this year. So, again, that's good. Water fund, I believe, had the same thing, except revenue and expenses shot way up. And that was due to some state funding you got for lead line replacement, so that increased revenues and expenses in both funds there. Uh, next thing is Grand Haven Light and Power. You'll see they did have an increase this year, so that's good. Last year was a little high, or a little different. It had a loss. And they had a asset retirement obligation to record last year, so that was a really big hit to the bottom line. And that is all that I had, unless there's any questions.
Questions from council? Or is there any comment from staff that you'd like to make?
Nope, just again, an appreciation to our finance department as they've worked diligently with the audit staff to accomplish a clean audit, so give them a lot of credit.
Thank you. And the Audit Review Committee did a look at this about three weeks ago, went through it in some detail in similar format. And I think you have the notes for that in your packet.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Questions?
No, I guess I was just gonna ask Mr. Mayor if you or Counselor Fritz had, because you're on the Audit Review Committee, if you had any statements or observations you wanted to make.
Um, go ahead, Bob.
Go ahead, Mike.
Only thing I was gonna say is that if you look through the thing we have here saying that our department, Treasury Department, and everybody works so well with the auditors on it, that every year it seems to be getting better as we go. I remember little times back where we had a lot of discrepancies and different things we had to work to. And as Emily's group has been working very hard and diligently and making sure everything is in order state, it seems to be doing so much better now.
Yeah, I appreciated the work of staff and the smoothness of the audit and this clean, unqualified audit. There was considerable discussion at the Audit Review Committee about the pension information, which I know is something that we discuss a lot, because it's a big deal. And you see the notes from our Audit Review Committee where, depending on the assumptions you make, whether it's the State of Michigan version or the MERS actuarial version, there's quite a difference in the unfunded portion of it. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that other than what's in the notes here.
No, I was happy to see that you clarified that, Emily. You know, thank you for digging into that, because I was having the same problem, seeing it referenced in different, and feeling like we had a, you know, five-alarm fire, and I was the only one that was seeing that, so... And I see you also have included a plan to start to address that as well.
That's what I was going to say, is there's going, we're gonna have more discussion during the council meeting with Ashley. And I've worked to come up with a plan to start funding that, to be proactive, so.
Yeah, there were numbers I didn't expect to see either. But it's the difference in the procedures between the two bodies. And for the sake of the audience, anyone listening, the audit had, was a 61% funded on our pension unfunded liability versus the 68% that we anticipated from MERS. And that's quite a difference. The dollar amounts aren't that much difference, but it's the projected liability.
Well, and also when we hit 60%, it triggers some state requirements, correct, Emily?
So it does, yes, but as long as we are taking steps to correct those, then we will be okay.
And stay above.
Correct. So the idea, like I said, coming to you during the council meeting, we have some suggestions. And as long as we start to make those, if we do fall below that 60%, we can, when the state does ask questions, we can say, yes, we are taking steps to correct that.
And that was in part the impetus to get something on your agenda prior to the end of this current calendar year as well?
Correct, because the next annual actuarial valuation will be dated December 31 of 2023, with the new rates coming, for payments coming July 1 of 2025. So if we can show that we have started making those payments, it's going to reflect, be a better reflection for the city.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Other than that, good work. Appreciate everybody's efforts.
I have, I have one question. It's less related to the audit, but it's peripherally related. It's in a management statement and, um, I guess it's on page six or twenty-eight, depending on which document you're looking at, six of the, um... We have a statement here, and it just, it said, "The financial statements include not only the city itself, known as primary government, but also a legally separate Economic Development Corporation, Main Street Downtown Development Authority, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, for which the city is financially accountable." They may be legally separate, but they're not completely independent, right? If the Economic Development Corporation is the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Yeah, they're one in the same board.
They're one in the same.
They were, well, it's two boards that were combined. So they have slightly different mandates, but they reside on the same individuals on the boards.
Yeah.
So those responsibilities are kind of merged. And no, they're, they're still subordinate to city council.
Yeah.
In many ways.
So my question is a little bit less, more about independence and whether or not, I think both the authorities kind of come from certain state statutes.
Yes, yes, they do.
And they're separate. And while they have similar, they're not ident, you know, identical. We did combine them. I, you know, we just might want to look at that legally, whether or not that was a really great thing, you know, to do. You know, practically speaking and legally, if, you know, if they are, you know, indeed supposed to be separate. And the second thing is, either in practice or, um, part of our charter, we have, maybe it's just been more of a protocol, practice. We haven't allowed people to sit on more than one board. And by combining them, we kind of may have done that inadvertently, or, you know...
I don't think it was inadvertent. The boards and commissions are different from the Board of Directors of the Economic Development Corporation. And the Brownfield Authority has been merged into that rather than equal merger. So I think what you're looking at is a Board of Directors of a corporation, as opposed to a member of a board and commission of the city. They're not really, they're not really the same, they're not really the same thing.
So they're legally separate, but they're not, I just might need, apart from the, you know, I just might need a sidebar on sort of some of the, legally how that's, you know, working. I just want to make sure I understand that, given that the city is responsible and accountable, at least for one of those entities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In different, vaguely similar way, we have a community land trust, which is a nonprofit corporation. And the city is the only member of that entity, but the Board of Directors includes myself, which I'm here as well as there. And, but that Board of Directors is independent of our boards and commissions also. So it's not really, not really the same sort of a board or commission. It's a Board of Directors.
We can offer further clarification on that.
Yeah, I used to see them. I know they've been combined, but I do recall a time when they were separated on our webpage as two separate boards, but we had, but they were identical members, and we had brought this up before. I just haven't seen, maybe other cities have done that, combined them both. I just would like another look at that from a legal perspective. That's all.
We can look at that with the audit too a little bit next year.
That's, that's all.
Okay, that's it. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, you got off easy for questions.
I like that.
You did a good job. Thank you. Wow. There being no other questions or no other items of business on this work session. I will adjourn this work session. We will break for a birthday cake. So.
Brian, out there?
Oh, man.
So we are going to...
Brian, you should be doing that.
Well, that's where we are.
And that's where you are.
Here, Larry, take it over there.
Nobody ever sits over there anymore.
That's where the fashions.
There's one thing you have to do with that whole cake, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's Brian's cake. He's being happy, huh?
Yes.
There we go.
Sorry, don't turn your lighter.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Brian had that cake turned, when I went out, it turned ninety degrees, almost off the clock.
That is why we do that.
Brian, put it on.
If you want the cake, you're up here.
There's one thing you have to do with that whole cake, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's Brian's cake. He's being happy, huh?
Yes.
That's the, that's the act.
All the guys on the road, this cake, don't come in, man. Up here and do it, man.
You want some?
Yeah.
Brian had that cake turned, when I went out, it turned ninety degrees, almost off the clock.
That is why we do that.
Brian, put it on.
If you want the cake, you're up here.
If you want the cake, you're up here.
If you want the cake, you're up here.
We're in my, uh, in the public.
I thought you were expecting me to sit.
Yeah, he's not. He's not.
He wants to make sure that you're on the level.
Yeah.
I thought you were expecting me to sit.
Yeah, he's not. He's not.
He wants to make sure that you're on the level.
Yeah.
The guy's on the road, this cake, don't come in, man. Up here and do it, man.
You want some?
Yeah.
You want some?
Yeah.
You want some?
Yeah.
You want some?
Yeah.
I know.
I couldn't tell Brian what to take in, man.
That's a surprise, too.
Tim, we heard a tough island.
Yeah, it does feel real good.
Yeah, it does feel real good.
Yeah.
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 What were you calling?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I need better, getting, you get them.
Uh, oh, that's, oh, right, it's the city.
Not yet.
That's it, that's the act.
Other guys on the road, this cake, don't come in, man. Up here and do it, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't have the man, but he's not.
I know.
I couldn't tell Brian what to take in, man.
That's a surprise, too.
Tim, we heard a tough island.
Yeah, it does feel real good.
Yeah.
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 All right, can I have some?
Yep.
Consider the arm.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Keep looking at him.
Yeah.
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 I like, I like green olives with the color.
Yeah.
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 Well, it didn't want to have, well, it was really special. Now you feed it to a cow, and you make hamburgers.
I remember I ate a lunch somewhere.
It eats this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. All, all of the pickle cake.
It's costing, it's costing.
Yeah.
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 Brian, you guys made some fairing for your particular.
Is that what that?
You guys made some fairing for your particular.
Really, you were proud.
Well, I did, though.
Yeah.
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 Oh, yeah.
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 It's wrong, man. Come get a piece of cake.
Get birthday cake.
Everybody's saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody's, everybody's coming out, you come get some cake.
Before you sit down.
Yeah. Before you sit down, come on, get some cake.
It's true.
There you go.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah.
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 Cecil, Cecil, get some birthday cake.
Yeah, I got a, I got a.
Ashley.
Ashley.
Says someone to go, come.
Oh, all right.
Right there.
You don't want to be the only one out there now, you can take.
Yeah.
You're sweetening up.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what you need. You need to sweeten it up.
Yeah.
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 Marie, do you know if we have a minister tonight?
We're supposed to.
We were supposed to last night.
They said, ah.
Okay, we're going, we're going.
Uh, Mr. Park.
Yeah, I could do that, but it doesn't make any sense.
I thought she was, she had a shift.
Catwalk City, that's my favorite poem. I forget who wrote that, but. I remember reading that when I was in high school. Catwalk City, oh. There you go.
Yeah.
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 Come get cake. Don't leave it here.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, sorry.
I'm learning to say it.
Just taking the shirt on you.
Even under pressure, you're not asking.
Yeah.
He said that.
Yeah.
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 Well, pretty much, depending on, so you are so mean.
Yeah.
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 Thanks for the word.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
Am I? Okay, good. Welcome everyone to this regular session of the Grand Haven City Council for Monday, December 4th, 2023. Marie, would you please call the roll?
Fritz?
Here.
Lo?
Here.
McLaughlin?
Here.
Cummins?
Here.
Minnetza?
Here. Invocation this evening is by Reverend Art Van Wald. Is he in the house? Well, if not, then we'll roll straight into the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand, and we'll say the pledge allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, everyone. We have no reappointments or appointments this evening, so it brings us to the approval and the consent on regular agendas. If, and I want to make clear, my philosophy on consent agendas has always been that if there's any item on a consent agenda that any council member would like to have an extended discussion or possibly has any doubts about, that we should move it to new business, just as a matter of course. So if anybody would like to make that request, we do it now before we approve, before we approve the agendas. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent and regular agendas. They're moved in support. Okay. Motion by McLaughlin, supported by Fritz. Questions on the motion? Please call the roll.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to our first call to the audience. This is the first of two opportunities. At this time, members of the audience may address counsel on any item, whether on the agenda or not. Those addressing counsel are asked to provide their name and address. We'll be limited to three minutes of speaking time. Counsel will hear all comments for future consideration. Will not have a response at this time. And of course, you can call in on 616-935-3230 if you're not here and would like to call in. And I would also mention also to the audience that there are no public hearings this evening. So if you have, if you have something to say about any agenda item, now would be the time to say that as opposed to waiting for that item. So who would like to go first?
Jim Hagan, 400 Lake. As you can see, tonight's topic's going to be levels. What it's going to be is talking about the levels on sidewalk ramps, especially on the new Howard Street project. I think a lot of you guys have been involved with building over your experience. And one of the key things to use with building is a level, right? It tells you which way a slope goes. You know, a sidewalk ramp going down to the road should go in this direction, right? It shouldn't go in this direction. Well, unfortunately, on the project on Howard, they decided to put the ramp going to my corner lot at a negative slope. So instead of water flowing down the ramp to the roadway, the water flows up the ramp, across the intersecting square, and down the other ramp going to lake. I've had probably over a dozen correspondents with the city on this, the project manager. We had the project manager, Evan March, two engineers, one was the PE out there. They said, oh, you know, there's no, there's no regulation that requires sidewalk ramps to flow into the street. There's not going to be a problem. And yeah, there's going to be a problem. You cannot have water coming from the street up. Whoops, there we go. Another, another hazard. You can't have it coming up, up the ramp and getting over both ramps and freezing. And this is going to happen during the winter. You know, there was a lot of discussion, well, you know, we did all this work with the transit, this, that, we've got all these numbers. Well, you know, we've got to be, look at practicality in the city. When you've got a level, a six-foot level, and it's showing that the bubble's touching the line, I think a lot of you probably know what that means. That means you have a quarter inch of slope per foot. That quarter inch of slope per foot is what's normally on like a porch, on a drain pipe. It assures that there's a minimum level of drainage. On a sidewalk ramp, you go to, you want to look at best practice, you go to MDOT. MDOT requires five to seven percent on a sidewalk ramp. I've got the standard drawings here. If anybody's interested, I'll, I'll show them to you after the session. We need to have proper designs and proper installations. The sidewalk ramp on going down to Howard is not proper. And I'm going to read an email that was sent to the project manager. Thanks for sending the elevation layer drawing snippet. Design slope for side, for the sidewalk ramp to Howard Street was positive on the design, although substantially below good practice. A positive slope would drain liquid to the Howard Street curb. The installed slope is negative, which allows street liquid to flow up the negatively sloped sidewalk ramp. The bubble on the six-foot level touches the line on the Howard Street side, which means there's a negative slope of quarter inch per foot over the measured distance. You can read the rest of this. It's been submitted to the clerk for inclusion in the official meeting notes. Safety and hazard issue should be fixed.
Thank you, Jim. Who else would like to speak?
Good evening. Name is Cecil Bradshaw. Live at 31 Sherman Avenue. In November, the voters of Grand Haven voted no on the charter change. But those that were really involved in that found that there was some issues that were uncovered during that. One of them is the lingering FOIA request from Dave Walters in August regarding Andrea Hendrick, potentially sending Board of Light and Power emails to her personal email and then sending them to council members. Instead of turning the emails, as well as texts and phone calls, over in response to that request, Andrea hired her personal attorney, who then obtained 1,600 of her emails from her account. What is she trying to hide? There are suspicions that many of these emails from her personal account regarding her desire to dissolve the BLP were shared with select members of our city council regarding the BLP CCC cause. Although some have been turned over, the city attorney has a list of things that should be disclosed, which at this point she has not done. As a taxpaying citizen, a BLP customer, I'd like to know whether we have some degree of corruption going on. Grand Haven residents deserve to know the outcome of the potential unethical communications between a BLP board member and the city council. If there's nothing to hide, I think that you as a council would want to put this to bed, force the issue, and get it cleared up. It's gone on for three and a half months now. The second is regarding the allegations against the BLP from a whistleblower. The person has turned over to the city attorney over 200,000 emails. In looking at Michigan, Michigan law in terms of whistleblowers, the whistleblower in their complaint is supposed to provide names of the individuals involved, dates, times, locations of the incidents, description of the misconduct, including specific actions, decisions, or communications, the impact of the misconduct on the organization or individuals involved. Now, October 16th, the city manager was given the green light by the city council to go ahead and hire a, another, another legal firm. So what if, if, are we in fact paying an attorney to determine these things that the whistleblower should have provided? If they, if they are just looking at, if their process is to try to find something to work on, that's wrong. It appears that we would be paying for a witch hunt. I personally feel that no more money should be spent on this unless the whistleblower has provided specific inform, if no specific information has been provided, I think the matter should be dropped. It's a huge issue, and I think that we as citizens of Grand Haven deserve regular updates on the progress of this investigation. And could it be perhaps that the city manager might include status reports on that in, in her city council meeting, in her report? I believe that you, our council should actively pursue both the FOIA and the whistleblower issues and make it a priority to bring them to a conclusion. Let's get rid of the distractions, deal with them, and get on with things that really matter to the city. Right now, there just seems to be some subversive stuff going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecil. Who else would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the audience, but there will be another at the end of the meeting. So at this point, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Marie, would you read that?
Item A, approve regular council meeting minutes of November 6, 2023. Item B, approve the bill's memo on the amount of $441,969.06. Item C, authorize the city manager to submit a coastal management grant program grant application in the amount of $45,000. Provide matching funds in the amount of $45,000 to be reimbursed by the Grand Haven Lighthouse Conservancy, and authorize expenditures in the amount of $90,000 for entrance lighthouse educational and historical displays, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Item D, approve a resolution to receive and place on file the annual financial reports for June 30, 2023, as prevented by Reedaveld Hefner LLC. Item E, approve a resolution to accept the proposal from Reedaveld Hefner LLC for annual auditing services for the years ending June 30, 2024 through June, June 30, 2028 for the city of Grand Haven, Grand Haven Spring Lake Sewer Authority, and Northwest Ottawa Water System. And item F, approve a resolution to obligate all remaining ARPA funds to the Harbor, to the Harbor Island Remediation Fund to be obligated by December 21, 2024, and expended by December 31, 2026 per SLRF requirements. Sorry, SLF RF requirements.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? So moved.
Second?
Motion by Fritz, second by Lo. Questions on the motion around the consent agenda? Would you please call the roll?
Fritz?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes. Okay, we have two items of new business. Would you please read the first?
Item A, consideration by city council of a resolution to reallocate $500,000 from the sale of the diesel plant previously allocated to the Harbor Island Remediation Fund, and deposit same into the MERS surplus division by 12/15/2023. Allocate a portion of the adult-use marijuana tax revenue and additional local community stabilization authority tax revenue received in fiscal year 2324 above the budgeted amount to be deposited into the MERS surplus division. Administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? So moved. In support. Motion by Cummins, supported by Fritz. Okay, questions and discussion on this? Does anybody need clarification from staff? Emily, would you like to explain this?
Sure. Emily Green, Finance Director. As we kind of discussed during the work session for the audit, there are differences between the MERS annual actuarial valuation there are differences between the MERS annual actuarial valuation percentage of funded versus the state. The state has different assumptions that they use. So our audit, MERS estimates that we are funded at 68.5%. The audit with reviewing that through, with the Audit Review Committee shows that we're about 61.5% funded. Because of that, Ashley and I sat down and we allocated the $750,000 from the sale of the diesel plant to go towards the Harbor Island remediation. And given the funding ratio, we would like to reallocate $500,000 from that and make that payment before December 31 of this year so that that $500,000 and any additional, if you want to discuss that too, can be included in the annual valuation that will be dated on December 31 of 2023.
Do you know approximately what the adult-use marijuana tax revenue and the additional LCSa revenue is?
So we budgeted for the, for the adult-use marijuana tax revenue, we budgeted 50, around 51,000, which is the same amount that we received last year. We don't know what that amount is going to be, and we won't know that until March. But the thought was, we leave the 51,000 budgeted. If we receive any more for additional licenses, then we pay that out at that point. And I think we plan, the plan is then for budget years upcoming, we, depending on the budget, do either the same thing or maybe all of the marijuana, the adult-use marijuana tax revenue. And then the LCSa, we budgeted 500,000. Again, we, in prior years, we haven't budgeted anything for the LCSa because we don't know what. It has been, the last two years, it's been around 900,000. Last year, we budgeted 500,000 for the LCSa. So depending on what we receive in May, those funds would then be used to allocate towards the pension. Pension was closed last year. We had, you know, it, it was easy to close it, but funding it is, is the hard part. So we're starting to look for ways to do that. And this was an idea of how we can start making that, funding that.
Okay, thank you. And just so anyone who missed our discussion on the audit, there was a discrepancy between all the, all the audit counts, the MERS actuarial percent funded, which was 68.5% funded. And from the state of Michigan's point of view, with their assumptions, it's more like 61.5%, which is getting very low to a 60% threshold, which provides us additional help that we may not want. So we're trying to avoid getting to that point. So this measure and the last measure under the consent agenda are efforts by staff to begin to address this. Questions by council?
No, I just, just for everyone's benefit, I just want to comment that there are two parts of the whole pension problem, if I, as I would describe it. One is the unfunded liability component, which is using those state assumptions is close to 35 million, is that right? Using the 7%, if we use that and the 61 for consistency?
No, so the unfunded, the unfunded accrued liability still is 29, 29 million, excuse me.
29 million, okay. But the, so the unfunded, so there's the unfunded pension liability, which is a big lump sum. And then there's the annual expense payment, the minimum payment that we have to make each year, which is close to, it's two, over two million.
It's like 2.1 million?
2.1 million.
Correct. But that, that, that amount is, what they do is kind of smooth and figure you're going to pay that off in 18 years. So that would take care of, you have to pay that, and that's going to take care of the unfunded accrued liability as well.
Right, but if we had done, we did that before though, and it didn't pay, you know, pay off the pension, right? So my point is, we don't know, there's a lot of, what we did by closing the pension to new hires, we have certainty sometime in the future, we're going to be done with this problem. But we still don't, we have a lot of uncertainty and volatility until then. But I just wanted to distinguish between what we're putting aside in our annual payments and what we've budgeted for, which, by the way, I, I think it's important for us, you know, to note one of your statements there, that 68%, so nearly, nearly 70% of that annual expense payment is just for the unfunded portion of our Department of Public Safety. Correct?
Correct, I believe.
Yeah. So there's the expense payment that we pay each year, and that's just what we have to pay to kind of keep it going. It's supposed to tackle the principal, if you will, or the unfunded portion. But it's a good or best practice to try to pay, pay that down, which is why you're creating this surplus fund and looking at.
There's an annual required contribution, which is like the 2.1 million that we have to pay.
Right.
This additional 500,000 plus, say, 50,000 from the adult-use marijuana, plus, say, 400, say funds would be in surplus in addition to the annual required contribution. And, and that's the idea is if we, if we start to make those payments eventually, we're going to be, like I said, proactive. We'll be proactive in, in making those payments instead of waiting for the figures to come from MERS. We know that we have the unfunded accrued liability that we have to take care of. And so this is just our way of saying, we realize it's there and it's time to do something about it.
Right. And there, you know, I guess one thing that I liked in your proposal was this looking at this, you know, portion of the proceeds from the diesel plant sale. I think if we are selling city, you know, assets, I think we need to look at putting a significant portion to pay off a liability that we owe to our retired city employees via the pension. There's no other way we're going to pay, you know, pay that down. And it is a fairly significant debt per capita, as we talked about last time. And I think I certainly would feel a lot better if we had started to look at that as a practice, if we are selling any city property, land, that we look at dedicating a certain, a majority of that, more than 50%, or 50% or more, to paying down our unfunded pension liability as a responsible thing to do. We're not going to have any windfells anywhere, anywhere else. So I think that was a good way to start. So anyway, kudos to you for the suggestion.
Well, and Ashley, we worked together and were trying to brainstorm. I think that the number, the 61 versus 68% was eye-opening to us and realized, it just made us realize. Plus you, in the consent agenda, you know, you obligated the ARPA funds to go towards Harbor Island. So this made sense to tackle, start tackling this.
Right. There are some other sources for Harbor Island, fortunately, you know, which, but there are not for the pension, which is why this makes sense. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Excuse me. Sorry, anything else, Karen?
No, for me.
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I support this as well. I appreciate staff bringing this forth. As we just found out from our, our audit presentation, our, our general fund balance increased at the end of this last fiscal year by $2.3 million to $7.5 million. And, you know, this council previously has set kind of a, a policy percentage as far as, you know, for having a rainy day, and, and that's at around $3.1 million. So we have lots of room above our rainy day fund as far as dollars and things that we can do with those dollars if we were to choose to, as far as infrastructure Harbor Island needs. And in this case, like putting extra dollars towards our unfunded pension liability is a good thing to do. So, fully support.
Thank you. Anything?
Only that I, I thank Emily and Ashley for getting this together. It surely shows that, you know, this, Grand Haven is going to have to continue to find sources of revenue, let's be honest. And, and this just proves it because all of a sudden you get a, a bombshell out of MERS that nobody expected. And that can happen again, it can happen again and again. So I hope that in the future, as things move forward, that we really take a hard look on how we increase our revenue into the city. Because I think that's, it's something that, that is going to at least give us, you know, additional money to, to work with. True, we have, you know, a nice, you know, fund balance. But that can go away quickly too. So I just, I just hope that we, we take a hard look at things as we move forward. But I do support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
I'm not going to add a whole lot to it, but I just want to say thank you, Emily, and everybody who put this together and moving forward with it. I have other things that, that I've realized, but the thing is, I'm not going to comment on tonight. I'm just going to support this and move forward.
Thanks, Mike. And this is the question at hand. And I think that this is a good way to use our, the resources we have to deal with this, to deal with this portion of this problem. We talked about the fund balance. Some of this is part of that fund balance addition, where you are applying it. And the reason you have a fund balance is so that you have the resources to deal with problems as they come up. Fund balance isn't supposed to be a profit that sits around and just accumulates. It's supposed to be useful money. Otherwise, we're using, we're collecting the taxpayers' money and not making use of it. So I think applying it in this manner makes good sense. It gets a little bit closer to our goals, and every little helps. So I think it was a good move as well. So if there are no other comments, then I would. Karen, anything? Okay. I saw you.
No, no.
Okay. I'm wanting to read you guys. Would you please call the roll?
Cummins?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes.
Next item.
Item B, consideration by city council of a resolution to adopt the musical fountain song and choreography request policy as recommended by the musical fountain committee. Administration recommends approval.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Fritz, second by Lo. Mr. Gatos, do you have something to contribute here?
Good evening, Your Honor, fellow council members. Yes, Derek Gatos, Pollock Works Director for the City of Grand Haven, bringing forward this request to formalize this, this song policy. Song and choreography policy. This has been a couple of years in the making. If, if you remember, 2021, we had some, some issues with requests and how the, the committee was, was taking songs. There was an attorney opinion at the time and which way to go. And, and we didn't necessarily follow up with staff at the time to, to bring this formal policy to the committee and then on to you for consideration. But it came back up again this, this late summer, early fall. The, the policy, as you read in your packet for consideration, was, was reviewed by our attorney and believes that this is the route to go for us to have this formal policy. The musical fountain committee had discussed it at length. They made one minor change on who was actually going to, you know, compile the list and keep, keep record of that. But, but in essence, it's the same policy that Attorney Bolchi approved. And it keeps us in the good graces of having a musical fountain for, for our community and that you, under the direction of the musical fountain committee, makes those approvals of what songs to play and, and the choreography of the lights and, and water. So, that said, if you have any questions?
All right. Thanks, Derek. Are there any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Derek. Thank you to the musical fountain committee for their work on this. I'm glad the city attorney is good to go.
Anyone else? And I sat, I sat through the last musical fountain committee meeting, and I watched them as they went through a lengthy list of songs and voted on each one individually. They have their internal criteria for making their decisions, and they work collectively together to come up with an approved list, approved by the fountain committee. So it works. Any other questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Fritz?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Minnetza?
Yes.
All right, we have one item of unfinished business. Could you please read that?
Consideration by city council of a resolution to award an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for rehabilitation to the former diesel plant at 518 South Harbor Drive, parcel number 70-03-20-399-010, pursuant to Section 2 and Section 4 of the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, PA 146 of 2000, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Administration recommends approval.
All right. I think we should have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Fritz, second by Lo. This did, this did receive a public hearing at our last meeting. We began discussion of this resolution at our last meeting. We left off because we were interested in further conditions on the approval. So, Ashley, would you care to summarize where we're at?
Sure. In trying to capture the conversation that city council had at their previous meeting, the proposal that we're bringing forward today is more of a recommendation to award an eight-year abatement with the opportunity to request an extension upon meeting certain criteria. So after further conversation with the development team, eight years per their financial institution seemed to be the, the minimum abatement that they were agreeable to per the loan terms. And additionally, as we note in the memo, the Oprah program is slated to sunset in December of 2026. And we received confirmation from the state treasury that further kind of pushed our recommendation of eight years, that if the program were not renewed, although that's unlikely, the extension would no longer be available for existing abatements as well. So that was further premise for us to proceed with the eight-year recommendation. And again, trying to capture the conversation we had at the previous meeting, upon the eight years, the extension criteria that we've formalized within the resolution is the creation of a minimum of 40 full-time equivalent jobs, investment of no less than $8 million in the form of redevelopment costs, year-round operation, historic preservation per the planning commission approval for their case 23-03, and then a demonstration of financial need with a debt service coverage ratio average of 1.2 or less at year eight of the exemption certificate.
Thank you. Would anybody from the development team like to address council before we discuss? Or would you prefer to be here for, to answer questions?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Nathan Watson and Kyle Ingbers with Grand Power Works together. We'd be happy to answer any of your questions when you have, have them raised. Just thankful for the opportunity to be here and speak to you. And hopefully, also in our team, Roman Wilson is our consultant on the brownfield, can answer any questions regarding that. And Brant Cohen over here. Brant Cohen is our development associate, has had most of our first frontline discussions with the city administration. And also learning about local democracy, our intern, Avon Alvarez back here. He probably won't be answering any questions today, but it would be fun.
He may have more questions than he has answers. Thank you. All right, let's bring it to council then. Who would like to go first?
I'd be happy to. First of all, I want to thank the development team. I think you came back with, and this city manager, you came back with exactly what I was looking for, is some kind of a happy medium and understanding, with an understanding of where we're at from a city perspective, you know, financially, but also looking to team. I also wanted to make, you know, I guess a few comments for the, for the public to understand a little bit more because Mayor Minnetza made some excellent points at the last meeting that I think have been lost in, in all of this. One is that the prior city council did ask, you know, they chose, chose your firm because you were, you were going to preserve, historically preserve that building, the building facade. That, you know, you were also, we, we, your intent was to have a restaurant and an event space. And I think we all know, it's very easy for people to build condos. That's a highly profitable kind of a business. But the margins in restaurant, you know, running restaurants and the failure rate of restaurants is, you know, margins are small and the failure rate is high, and it's really difficult to sort of make money that way. But that's what this community wanted in that space. And you guys have honored that and kind of moved forward, all in good faith. You know, all in all, with all of the, you know, the benefits that are coming back to the community, I think you summarized well in your presentation. I am in favor and support this, this application and this grant.
Thank you, Karen. Ryan?
Yeah, I don't have a, a ton to add. I, I think we, when we left it last time, we were hoping for maybe more of a six- I, I think we, when we left it last time, we were hoping for maybe more of a six-year, a six-year extension. I, I think the reasoning here has been explained related to, you know, the financing that you're able to obtain and then some of the uncertainty related to the Oprah program expiring. So, you know, just given, taking this process, I'm happy with the extension consideration criteria. So nothing further.
All right, thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I have some, some questions and some comments. We, we only got this first proposal about four days before our council meeting last time. So I didn't really have a chance to go through the whole thing. So I'm just kind of covering some things that, that kind of stuck out to me. I did write a, an email and asked for some, some questions to be answered. Some of them were answered, some weren't, but that's all right. But, you know, a couple of things. We approved the original Oprah application on September the 5th. The development team completed, according to your pro formas, you completed the pro forma September 29th. You had the proposal done on October the 4th. Why did it take six weeks to get to us? Because that's what it took. Took six weeks to get to this, to this council for consideration. And then you gave, gave us three days to consider it. So why did you sit on it or why whoever's responsible? Why did it get, why did we sit on it for six weeks?
Councilmember McLaughlin, I will just add that one of the delays was an internal delay on our end. There was an initial delay on the development team's end, but there was a miscommunication or dispute among publishing deadlines that did arise at one point. And it turns out the development team was more or less correct in their assessment and we didn't think it was in the spirit of the regulation. We could have posted it for an earlier meeting, but we didn't think it was in the spirit of our intention for public hearing notices to have a shorter timeframe. So that was, there was one meeting that was our responsibility.
Okay.
Thank you, Ashley. We had tried to submit it about a week or two after that and we were given a date of when to submit it by and Ashley is exactly correct, so.
In your, in your proposal, you had a, you had a 12-year pro forma. Now we're going to an eight-year abatement. But this, and, and then you updated your, your presentation to November 20th. But you didn't include a, a pro forma, an eight-year pro forma, showing the financial analysis that I would like to see anyways, to justify the viability of this project. Any reason why you couldn't do that?
None in particular, except that, you know, pro formas, we're working on multiple projects and in multiple facets of this project all at the same time. And there's no particular reason. I think your question is, is our project, I'm trying to understand it. So is your question that now with a shorter Oprah period, will our project remain viable after eight years?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, real estate's a risky venture. We all know that. So we all take our chances and try to measure the best we can. We're not perfect at it, but I think we're, you know, optimistic that it'll be renewed, that we'll meet the terms for renewal in eight years. We do not know for sure. We have no 100% uncertainty in that. But we are doing the best that we can with what we have and we're still very excited about the project and wanted to move forward.
Okay. In the, in the memo, Ashley, you, you, you note like different extension considerations to go beyond the eight years. Is there any clawback on the original eight years if they don't, if they don't meet this criteria? Is there a clawback of the taxes that, that, that we have forgiven if they don't meet this criteria?
Not in how it's written, no. It was just before the extended term, the remaining four years.
Okay. I just think there's holes and, and I, and that's why, that's why I'm, I'm having a real problem with this is because I, I just don't think that we have the information that we, that we really need to make a decision. This is my background and, and it's just something that, that I was hoping that we'd get a little bit more information on. You know, one of the things I, I asked about to the, to the development team was in your September 29th pro forma, you list your permanent bank financing at $4,332. You said that the interest rate at the time was six, six and three quarters over 25 years. I took out my little old calculator and that comes out to $360,000. But you put, you, you, in the pro forma, it says $420,000. Now I got it, I got a, a note answering the question that said, oh, it's not six, it's not six and three quarters, it's eight and three quarters, which is the same amount that is in the, you know, in the, in the, in the loan amount for the during construction. Oh, where did the 2% go?
That's a simple question. It's simply a heading feature on the, on the spreadsheet. We update pro formas frequently and frequently at your request and for others the same. But the rate is eight and a half percent. We have a letter of interest from our lender and the rate is set as a prime rate. And according to Wall Street's money, money rates table, the current prime rate is eight and a half percent. So that's the number we're working as of November 2023. And so we calculated eight and a half percent, which comes to the 420,000.
You're right. I'm not saying that, but it's just that there was a discrepancy, that's all. Just S, you know, where it came from.
Sometimes omissions occur, not intentional.
You know, as I said at the last meeting, you know, we had an appraisal of $1,550,000 and we agreed to sell this property for a million dollars. Knowing, thinking that there were certain contingencies that were in the buy-sell agreement that we all agreed to, but there was no mention of us, of you coming back here and asking us for a substantial tax break. As far as I'm concerned, we already gave you a tax break, the $550,000 in my mind. Anyways, so we, we gave you that tax break and now you're basically doubling down on, on, on what I believe. So, you know, based on those comments at our last meeting and, and to me, the vague and sometimes no answers you provided to me on some of the subsequent questions. And, 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 and at least to, to my, to my background, a little bit of smoke and mirrors of the pro forma. You know, we all know that pro formas are, can be very creative, let's put it that way. So, you know, I will not support this resolution. I, I really have not changed my mind on that. Because we don't have all the facts. I believe that we don't, we don't know what the total capital stack is. Why did you come to us before you do, before you got the approval from M E D C? What you, what you, you know, what you're going to get on your, on the TIF? I would think you'd come back to us after, after the, after, after, after what we discounted the, the, the building for the 550. You know, I, I grew up in, in the old U-DAG program and it's, it's a but for. And I learned, you know, everything is, you know, but for our money. This project wouldn't go forward, but we don't have all those facts. So I'm going to vote no on this resolution. And I really urge the remainder of city council to, to, to also vote no. Because I think we are selling our taxpayers down the, down the river, down the Grand River and being dumped in Lake Michigan. And so I will not support this.
Thank you, Kevin. Mike?
Thank you very much for coming back with a better proposal for us. I appreciate it a lot. Thing is, we knew we were going down this road sooner or later and this is one of the few twos that we have in the state of Michigan we can use. I don't know what they use in New York or what they use in New Jersey or anyplace else, but I know in Michigan, this is one of the tools that we have as available for us to use help developers and them to, to, to turn properties into useful subjects for us again and make it useful again. So I'm happy, I'm, I'm glad you changed your mind and gave us a little bit more than what we wanted. So thank you very much. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Mike. And as I've said, from when this whole project started way back in 2021, 2020 really, the, the lower price on the property included demolition of the building. That was the, that was how you got to the higher price. Keeping the building on there and attempting to work with it turned into something that the community can be proud of always came at a cost. So it's a burden on the property, but it's something that I believe the community wants. I think that, that trade-off would be acceptable to the people of this town because it's an iconic building to us. So if this, if the trade-off is that we could take a higher price and lose the building or a lower price, keep the building and repurpose it, that's not so much a discount or a subsidy, that's a choice that we made. It's a value choice that we've made. And so that's something the council has chosen to do, leave money on the table in exchange for that. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. The idea that there's an ask for incentives, tax incentives, was also from my recollection of the summer of 2021, when council chose to go with CL Lakewood as the developer and work out a buy-sell agreement at that point. There was knowledge then that there would be requests for incentives. It's, it's not a surprise to me that that's here. And the mix of incentives that became available is not exactly what we thought it would be, but that we've had two years since then for all of this to evolve and play out. So this is, this is the options we have before us. I think it's a decent option. I think that the public will be pleased to see that old building turn into something that they can use and be proud of. So for those reasons, more so than for the potential sale price or potential taxes that we will eventually collect. I think that, that's what makes this worth doing to me. So I think that we came up with the eight years. Sounds like it was well thought out. The conditions we put on a potential extension both prove that, would, was, we would serve to prove that they've done what they said they would do, they've turned it into the thing that we've asked for and they still demonstrated that they need the rest of the abatement. Because if they're greater than this debt service coverage average for that period of time, then they don't need the abatement, we don't continue it. And if they have not met that, that justifies why they asked for 12 in the first place. So assuming that that program is still available at that point in time, we would have measures in place to determine where to go with it from here. Elizabeth, I see you've gotten up.
Yeah, Elizabeth Butler, Director of Economic Development with the Grand Haven Chamber. Economic developer for the city of Grand Haven. I just would like the council to consider one minor change to the proposed resolution. On the back page, now therefore be it resolved and you go to, you talk about doing the eight, the Oprah for up to eight, for eight years. I would like instead of beginning December 31st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2032, eight years, instead of having the beginning and ending dates, I would like, I would recommend that you have just upon completion.
Eight years from completion of the project?
Yeah.
From a CL?
Yeah.
Just take it to occupancy? From a certificate of, from the issuance of a certificate of occupancy? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, eight years would.
It'll be eight years from.
No.
Starting construction?
Because that could be, that would be a year or two down the road, wouldn't it?
Yeah, so in, in, in the resolution, it stated that you would like, or you're requesting that the building be completed by September 1st, 2025. So if you say upon completion, that gives, gives some room for, for the eight years to still happen.
All right. I understand. Is there any question on that or any objection to that?
No, I mean completion, yeah. I guess could occur before that and as long as there's the understanding, yeah, that, yeah, there's still a September 1st, 2025 date to complete, so.
Should, should there be a, a boundary on that? Some maximum date? So that we don't find ourselves waiting due to other delays?
Can you say that again?
Okay, so instead of having a definite date, you want to leave it open, so certificate of occupancy?
Eight years upon completion.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so whenever they complete, then they get, they get eight years of the, of the tax abatement.
So that gives us an unknown starting time for it?
It actually starts, so I did, I talked to the state, the property tax exemption section manager over at the Michigan Department of Treasury. And so what he said, the effective date of Oprah certificate is December 31st in the year the state tax commission approves it. If the local unit resolution approves the application for 12 years after completion, their certificate would still be ineffective December 31st in the year they approve it, but we would add the number of years that the local unit resolution granted for completion. For example, if 2023 resolution said 12 years after completion and the construction period was granted and the resolution said that the construction must be done by October 1st, 2025, we would add two years onto the total time for the certificate. So you would have Oprah during the construction and then once they're done, then you get eight years. Oprah during construction would mean that they're collecting.
I'm confused.
They're getting some value during the construction period though. They're rebating some of that. So you're giving a longer period. Well, it's, it's a partial period, right? Because the, you're, you're assessed on December 31st of every year, right? So.
You're saying not much of value would be added in that first year?
Right.
Yeah, I just wonder, I just wonder if we shouldn't leave it that open.
But don't we have it starting December 31st of 2024? Are you saying it should be out further?
How do we come up with the language?
It says for a period of eight years beginning December 31st, 2024.
That language from the resolution is from a sample resolution that the state of Michigan gives to use as a template. So that language is from the state of Michigan.
Right, so, so I guess the spots where you put in the dates, what, what was the instruction and what date to put in?
To just put in the date of when the tax abatement would become effective. So since we've already missed the deadline for tax year 2024, it would be effective for tax year 2025.
So it would begin, that's what we have here because it begin, well, it begins December 31st, 2024. So it's essentially beginning 2025. Isn't that what you're trying to accomplish?
I just want to make sure that they could realize the full eight years of the, you know, if.
So do you want to, so should there be a date here or just?
That gives.
Upon talking to the state of Michigan, that was a recommendation that they shared with me that we could do to, you know, capture the full eight years.
Okay, because this, of course, this eight years doesn't start for a year from now.
Anyway.
Anyway.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And so potentially there's another year in there.
Yeah, we've already inserted a year, so I'm trying to understand. You're saying you need another year?
So.
Well, the tax abatement wouldn't start until December 30th. So for this coming year, 2024, they would not receive the abatement.
Well, the abatement consists of us not collecting the tax in the first place.
That, that, the abatement's not going to start until December 31st, 2024. So for going.
When does the value freeze?
I don't have those numbers.
The value would freeze upon the approval by the state tax commission.
Which would not be anything to do with this date.
Yeah.
So I mean, the abatement is that we don't collect taxes on anything above a frozen value. It's not that they receive it from us. We don't collect, we don't collect it from them.
Right.
Am I correct?
Say that one more time.
They don't receive money from us. We just don't collect it from them based on a frozen value.
Yeah, so they're good, yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, so when you say they wouldn't receive the abatement, well, they, we just don't increase the value above whatever it is at the date that it's frozen. So the beginning of this is probably less relevant than whenever it's going to end, which is going to be eight years and a couple more years based on when projects are potentially completed, correct? Okay. Okay, so, so you're, so, um...
So do you want something like beginning, no, earlier than this time and, and completing no later than this, eight year, you know, some bigger, a wider date range, but it's still for a period of eight years whenever it starts?
I was just trying to keep it clean by just, without putting the limits on it, just say upon completion.
So we have language in this resolution. We need to decide what the resolution says before we vote on it.
Yeah.
So given this paragraph, what should, what do you recommend that I should say? And let's read it together.
Being here, being hereby is granted an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption for the real property excluding land located in obsolete property rehabilitation district Oprah 23-001 at 518 South Harbor Drive, Grand Haven, Michigan 49417 for a period of eight years upon completion pursuant to the provisions of PA 146 of 2000 as amended.
Okay, so you're...
So just leave out all the dates and just put it upon?
You leave out the beginning and ending dates and just say upon completion. Would, to Kevin's point, would that be certificate of occupancy, would that measure completion?
Substantial completion?
I mean, completion, completion could be never, I mean, it could be, there's substantial completion, there's certificate of occupancy, there's certain, certain benchmarks we could cite. What would be best?
Our resolution says that the rehabilitation of the facility shall simply be completed by September 1st of 2025.
Yeah, it's going to be completed before the end of that eight years, so I don't know what...
Well, it'd be completed early in that process, but for the...
Are you happy with a September 1st, 2025 completion date? I mean, that's what's in here.
That's our target.
Well, so if it's September 1st, 2025, then what are you arguing about?
We're just trying to figure out what, what's the best words to put in here, and I do like the idea of having a benchmark that we can measure.
Yeah, oh, I agree, I'm just saying, but, but September 1st, 2025, if that's what the, the date is, then it should be eight years after that. Is that what you're looking for?
Elizabeth?
Yeah.
If we said, beginning on September 1st, 2025, or if we said upon issuance of certificate of occupancy, or if we said substantial completion, I mean, any of those phrases gives us something a little more concrete to shoot at.
Yeah.
But the substantial completion could go a year after that, you don't know.
Well, you don't know, but then maybe that's not, maybe that's not a realistic date either.
Material delivery and stuff, I don't know. I think it'd put it, I don't know, it's up to you, I think she put a date in, just say, if that happened with September 1st?
I just, well, just saying, leaving it as upon completion is a little more vague than I'm comfortable with.
How about, uh, occupancy then?
Certificate of occupancy, I'd go with that.
But she still could be well, I'm sorry, I don't mean...
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying...
Way beyond the September 1st, 2025.
It may be, but you can tell when it happened. Whereas completion, you may not be able to tell. So we would, we would have to amend this resolution. So would somebody like to make a, make a motion to amend?
I'm not sure I understand what people want changed. I'm in favor of this, but I need someone else to edit.
Well, I think what Elizabeth is asking for is instead of putting the beginning and ending dates that are in here now, she wants a beginning, a beginning event and no ending date other than eight years after that. So that event, as she's suggested, would be completion. What Kevin is concerned about is that it's hard to tell when completion actually happened, it's a little bit more subjective, but there are certain other things such as issuance of certificate of occupancy or substantial completion might be easier to measure, or this other date that's in the resolution would be a definite date.
Yeah, so...
Can this be amended after the fact? Can these dates be amended if, if the developers came back to the city and said, listen, we're, we got held up with supply? Can, could, can this be moved six months? If we keep these dates exactly how they are, could, could we come back and say, we understand we'll give you another six months, but keep these dates as they are? Can it be amended? Can anybody answer that question?
If we pass this...
My gut is saying no.
Yeah, I'm, I think we should, if we can get a...
You got it, I, I would, I would say...
If we can get better language now, we should do so.
Decide tonight.
Right, so I'll make a motion to amend the resolutions. Final paragraph here to read, being hereby, being hereby is granted an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption for the real property excluding land located at obsolete property rehabilitation district Oprah 23-001 at 518 South Harbor, Grand Haven, Michigan 49417 for a period of eight years, uh, upon, uh, completion, I'm, check that, when rehabilitation of the facility is completed as outlined in this resolution. Got that, Maria? The reason for that, me making that amendment based on completion of the rehabilitation of the facility, of the facility being completed as outlined in the resolution is because that's the language that's in the resolution already above, that says that the rehabilitation of the facility has to be completed by September 1st of 2025.
Correct, that's self-consistent then.
And if this cannot be changed, is September 1st, 2025, why, why do we have a deadline in there? Is there a concern? Or was that just part of the...
The state asked for it in the resolution and that's the information, that's the date we received from the information submitted to us.
Do we want to give any, a little more?
I'm comfortable with the date myself, but...
I think we're just, we're gonna get a mess here.
All right.
So I have an amendment made by Councilmember Cummins to have the end part of that statement say for eight years when rehabilitation is completed as outlined by this resolution.
And then pursuant to the provisions of, or no?
I'm just referencing the part that's getting edited.
She's just, yeah, she's just inserting that into this sentence.
Right, correct, yeah, the rest of it essentially remains the exact same, you're just striking beginning December 31st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2032.
Eight years, yeah, yeah. But you still keep the pursuant to the provisions of PA 146 of 2000 as...
Yes.
And this will satisfy you?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Cummins, second by Lowe to amend. The resolution changing the dates is, if anybody wants it right back.
Elizabeth, you feel comfortable with that?
Okay. At least you're more comfortable, or you're more comfortable than you were earlier. Any questions on the ammendatory motion? Please call the roll on the amendment.
Cummins?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
No.
Manetta?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes.
Okay, so now we need to vote on the resolution itself as amended. Are there any further questions before we vote? Please call the roll.
Fritz?
Yes.
Lowe?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
No.
Cummins?
Yes.
Manetta?
Yes.
This motion passes.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you very much, council.
This is a complex issue, as you could tell by our discussion. That concludes our agenda of issues, so brings us to the report by city council. Let's start on the other end this time.
Okay. I guess, first of all, I'll start off with a little baseball thing. I want to say thank you to Jim Leyland for making it in Cooperstown, which I had the opportunity to, to meet with him at one of the baseball banquets and what a great guy he was. But anyways, second of all, I want to say what a great parade it was, I mean, what a crowd we had out there for a Jingle Bell Parade, and it was just phenomenal, as many people that were around the whole thing, it's not just in spotty areas. I mean, if you go down Franklin Street, it was packed there, not only that, coming down Washington also. So I want to say thank you for everybody that attended that, and also the Artist Trail, which happened, which was another good event down there. And also ringing the bell for the Salvation, I want to say thank you for everybody that did that, it was a great, and we got to see a lot, Bob and I did the tail end of it, we got to see people that come by later at night, and it was good, it was nice to see the youth actually come in, they go in there, buy their candy and stuff at Fertino's, they 'd come out and they would throw their change, and it shows you that our community is a caring community no matter what, starting with our older folks and also all the way down to our youth, so just want to say thank you to them all.
Thank you, Mike. Kevin?
I'm good, thank you.
Ryan?
Yes, I second Mike's comment on the, the Jingle Bell Parade, big thank you to the, the chamber and tons of entries and everybody really, it seems like every year steps up their game even more and they did so, even more so this year, there was some, some great entries, huge turnout across the community, so that was just fantastic to see, and, and I agree with you, Mike, we have a very, very generous community, I was just, I saw a couple social media posts earlier today where some folks were reaching out and had some, some needs for, for various reasons and, and folks were, you know, stepping right up to try to, to help, help folks that had needs, so. There was a, a public comment tonight about the whistleblower investigation, the city council received a, a very general update on Sunday, and just to touch on a couple of the comments, the, prior to the resolution being brought to the council to consider an independent investigation, our city attorney met with the whistleblower and the whistleblower's attorney for a couple hours and received very specific details, very specific names, very specific dates and timeframes. Obviously, that level of detail wasn't included in the resolution, but that information is known and has been provided and is part of, and in fact, the whistleblower didn't just provide 200,000 emails, they pointed to 6,000 emails to specifically support their claims. So that's the, the focus of the ongoing investigation, I, I think initially the, the attorney was thinking that we might, this would take about a month, so like there were some initial delays because the whistleblower's attorney had some other matters or representing other clients on, so they had some scheduling conflicts and at least getting that initial interview done, but they're, they're well underway, they're reviewing the evidence and working on scheduling additional investigatory interviews and once things are complete, I, at least from my standpoint, I've said this before, committed to making sure that everything is brought out and everybody will have a chance to take a look at the same things we're seeing, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ryan. Karen?
I, I just wanted to also thank all of our city staff who decorated the floats, did, you know, and of course, the chamber for putting on. Honestly, the Jingle Bell Parade has to be my favorite parade for Grand Haven, I feel like I'm in a Hallmark Christmas movie, I love, I love how our town, how it shows off our town and that was, and it was an amazing turnout again, so thank you all for all of the work that you do every day to make us all look great.
Thank you, Karen. I'd like to acknowledge also what a fabulous parade it was and the enormous turnout, the community came out in a big way for this parade, for this celebration. I've never seen that many people around the tree when we lit it. Fortunately, I didn't sing very loud because I'm a terrible singer, but it's, it all went very, very well, it was a great evening. Town is getting into the holiday spirit in a big way, and the generosity of the town is also coming through in a big way, makes me proud. I would also like to thank my fellow council members and staff and everyone else for the thoughtful and thorough work that's being done on behalf of the city and dealing with some of the issues, some of these are very complex, some of them have some history, some of them, uh, take a little bit of back and forth before you really come to a good resolution, and then we do the best we can with that, and I think that's the way we work, so I appreciate all that, so, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Okay. Just a couple things here, as an update, as far as the community energy plan goes, Michigan Energy Options does have a handful of public engagement sessions on the schedule, the first one being at Central Park Place on December 12th from 5:00 to 7:00. These will be open house style, different tabletop informational sessions, booths, exercises to try to gather input as we work towards completing our community energy plan, but also they'll be hosting on the 13th, a morning session in Ferrisburg and an evening session in Grand Haven Township to try to reach all the participating municipalities, but please note that any city of Grand Haven resident can attend either the Ferrisburg or the Township session as well. So if you're available or would like, or if any member of city council would like a handful of these cards with the dates to hand out, we're looking to increase attendance as much as we can. Additionally, the Forest Management Subcommittee of the Sustainability and Energy Commission is hosting a Forest Management Summit, and that is Wednesday at 6 o'clock this week, that is also at Central Park Place. They are convening a number of the different boards and commissions who share an interest in preserving our urban forests, that being Duncan Park Commission, the Ski Bowl Association, Parks and Recreation, as well as the Cemetery Board, and they'll have a first convening where they're going to discuss the work that they're all doing independently in ways they can collaborate going forward. And then lastly, we, in the way of New Year's Eve, as you know, we always do a ball drop, we are looking to try something a little bit different this year, so we are going to, we have our, we have secured live music instead of playing over our audio system, so it'll be a little bit more exciting. Our staff, well, in large part due to several different staff among several different departments volunteering that evening, and a number of very generous sponsorships, we have the live music as well as the fireworks well-funded, so we can look forward to advertisements for that coming out in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Actually, the Forest Management Summit is scheduled at the same time as the regularly scheduled meeting of the Parks and Rec Board.
They are not planning on meeting that evening.
Have they consolidated that?
They did select a regular meeting time of one of the commissions, that way to try to maximize attendance.
Okay. That's, that's, it's a good idea, I just wanted to make sure it was clear that this wasn't, since it was a regularly scheduled meeting, that that had been consolidated.
Nope, it's a good clarification.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. That brings us to our second call to the audience. This time, all members of the audience may address council on any item, whether on the agenda or not. Will the addressing council ask to provide their name, address? We may be limited to three minutes of speaking time. We're here all comments for future consideration, will not have response at this time. Who would like to go first? Mr. Gatos?
Yes, Derek Gatos, I actually do live in the city, 1603 Stewart Street, so...
Thank you.
Anyways, but I'd like to introduce our new facilities and grounds manager, Doug Lang. Doug comes from the Indiana DNR.
Get up, get up.
You will, you'll be seeing him here, this is the first night, our first council agenda item, and actually, the, the one you voted on that I brought would have been, yeah, should have come from, you know, from his position, but he's just getting up and going, is doing a great job, and I think the next meeting or the meeting after that, you'll, you'll see him here requesting your consideration for a topic, so...
All right, thank you, have him come to the microphone and say his name.
My name's Doug Lang, yeah, I come from the Indiana State Park System, was a manager at two different state parks.
All right, well, welcome aboard.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else?
Jim Hagan, 400, I'd like, I'd like just to finish my discussion on the reverse slope on the sidewalk ramp. So following the statement where I mentioned there's a negative slope of a quarter inch per foot over the measured distance, I'm going to continue that, and I also conducted a hose test, which is a good old fashioned way of seeing which way water flows, as I think everybody realizes water flows downhill. So I placed a hose at the bottom of the ramp and it flew, it flowed up the ramp and down the Lake Street, ramp to Lake Street. So, I mean, the situation can, will easily lead to ice on both ramps. Talk about a skating rink for older people, we talk about how we have this... Talk about a skating rink for older people. We talk about how we have this demographic of older people, but yet we put in reverse ramps on sidewalks, and we tell the older people, "Oh, there's no problem." There is a problem. And I think if the city would actually conduct a study by an independent engineer, not somebody associated with the project, they would also say that it's not, there's a hazard, and it's not a safe installation. And I think the same thing would be said by any inspector who's also an independent inspector, and not an inspector hired by Aben March and paid by Aben March. They would say the same thing. And the insurance representative, if you've got an insurance representative out to that ramp, they would also say the same thing. So I would say to the city administration that it needs to be looked at. I don't accept the comments from the project manager nor the Aben March engineers that there is no problem there. We do not put in reverse ramps on sidewalks that allow water to come from a street onto the ramps and coat both ramps where they can become icy in the winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Who else would like to address council? Last chance. Seeing none, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for coming.